I'll ask everyone to rise. I'll call the November meeting of the City Council of Washington to order. And I'll call on newly re-elected Councilman Larry Hill to lead us in an invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just before we pray, I want to thank all the citizens of Washington, Georgia, District One and District Two for your electing me back into office. And I commit to making sure that I work with all of the council here, not just the black council, but white and black, District One and District Two. So we are pleased to serve again in this capacity. All right? Let's pray. Good Lord, our Father, we thank you for this opportunity. We pray, Lord, now that you bless us as we be about the business of the city of Washington, Georgia. We pray, God, that all the decisions that we make tonight will be based on doing our community and serving our community for the better good. We ask your blessing upon every family that is represented here, especially all of those who sit behind this sacred desk. Give us the wisdom and knowledge that will surpass all things that we feel inside. We pray now and asking in your name, in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Hill. Councilman Anderson, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. And we are the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, we've got a couple of things here. Before we get into the agenda itself, we have approval of minutes and approval of meeting agenda. So I'd like to first bring up the minutes, which were distributed with your packet. Any inputs, comments, corrections, changes, additions to the minutes from the October meeting?
I make the motion to approve the minutes. I'd rather them than like they should be.
All right, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second and any discussion? All right, all in favor of approval of the minutes of the October meeting, please raise your hand. All right, minutes are approved.
Mayor, before we go into further, I'd just like to say, I think that the minutes, you know, it's beautiful, great job with the minutes out there being recorded. I think it's plain as a baby car understand what happened at our City Council meeting. So 360 degree turnaround with the minutes, a beautiful job.
One of good work. All right, next is the meeting agenda. Do I have, you had the agenda before you. Do I have a motion for approval of the meeting agenda?
Motion.
Councilman Mahoney votes to approve. Second by Councilman Mahoney. Councilman Coles, any discussion? This conversation routed? All right, Harry Nunn, all in favor of approval of the agenda, please raise your hand. All right, agenda is approved. Okay, the next number, public comment, and this is particularly on the rezoning of North Mercer Street. And Jimmy, do you need to speak on this as well?
I can't.
Jimmy Toto, why don't you come up and speak a little bit on this? Tell us what this is about, then we'll have public comment on the Mercer Street rezoning.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you should have in your packet recommendation letter from the Planning Commission to approve rezoning of a parcel on North Mercer Street. This parcel is zoned partially R2 and partially C2. We have a prospective buyer that wants to buy this parcel and build apartments on it, so he would like it to be zoned completely R2.
I don't see it in the package here. What are you saying? What's it say?
I just have one copy.
Okay.
There it is. It's basically a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve rezoning. In a rezoning, the Planning Commission just makes a recommendation.
Okay.
And the City Council gets to hear the public input, if there is any, on this subject.
All right, so that piece of property there on North Mercer Street, this is from Mark Waters, it's the chairman of the planning commission.
That's correct.
That's right. Let's see, it's currently zoned C2 highway commercial and partly zoned R2 general residential. And so the applicant request that the property be zoned R2 completely to allow for construction apartments.
Correct.
Of duplex housing units.
Correct.
Do you know who the company is?
Oh, it's not a company, it's a citizen here in Washington, Vernon Anthony.
Vernon Anthony?
Yes, sir.
Okay, have we seen plans of what he has in mind?
Not yet.
Okay, okay.
He's trying to get this rezoning done before he buys the property. He still hasn't bought it yet.
But he's talking about apartments there.
Yes.
Okay. Do y'all know the piece of land we're talking about here?
I'm not sure. Can you make sure?
It's on the corner of Seven Oaks Drive and North Mercer Street. It would be the southern, on the south side of Seven Oaks Drive, going back towards Robert Toons.
Yeah.
It goes up and backs up to what was Sharon and Craig Jones's house.
Okay.
So right across from the gas, not from the Golden Pantry, cat a corner across the road and across the street from the car wash.
Correct.
That's right.
Correct.
That's right. How much property are we talking?
It's five, I'm sorry. Five and a half acres. Five and a half acres, okay, okay.
Because, just one last question, Mr. Mayor. So it's a housing community right there in that big lot.
That's right. Seven Oaks, yeah.
Seven Oaks is right there.
So there's a apartment, so.
This would be closer to Mercer Street than Seven Oaks is.
They have the community waiting, have they had community?
Tonight is the night that they do that if they want to.
Okay.
They weigh into you.
Okay, okay, okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
One more question. What is it currently zoned?
It's zoned R2, and there's a strip about 100 feet wide right at Mercer Street that is zoned C2. The thinking was when it was set up, if somebody wanted to build a convenience store or a gas station, they would have that 100-foot spot, they could do that.
All right, discussion? All right, let me call to vote. Do I have a motion?
We want to hear from the audience.
I'm sorry?
We want to hear from the people there.
Okay, we can do that. We can do that.
I have a question.
Yes, Charles.
Was that notice of the public hearing?
There was. There's a sign in front of, on the lot. It was advertised in the paper and letters were sent out to everybody that's within 400 feet of this parcel.
That's correct. Any comment from the folks here in the audience?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Larry.
If there are comments from the audience, I make a motion, I second, Mr. Coles.
Coles, motion approved, Hill second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please show your hand. Rezoning request is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. All right, now, next, public forum for justice council. They were had a couple of folks sign up. Task Williams, you here, sir?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to come on up and talk to council? Just let me remind you, we've got three minutes to kind of keep on track.
Yeah, I made reference to the bid on the Senate Hall.
Yeah.
And Mr. Peyton and the others. And I kind of missed out on the other one because I wasn't quite sure on some things. And so I asked for a spec on it. And this is potentially a whole lot. So I'm like, I'm going to take a look at what I'm supposed to be bidding on. I don't know how to repairs or what's supposed to be done.
Task, isn't this a question you should be asking the city administrator? We're really not tuned into it.
Well, I went through him the last time, and you know, I really just missed out on the job that I really felt belonged to me. Because I was told this was my.
Who gave you the specs?
Mr. Toto sent them to me today. But it's a lot that I don't understand, what brand of material I need. How do I, what do I repair with what? Because when I do a job, I try to do it the right way. But if someone else is going to do it cheaper and half do it, then I'm missing out. So I think everyone should have the same spec sheet and use the same of everything.
Right. And I really can't answer that. Jimmy, is that something that you handle, Jared, the bin, or who do you handle?
That's me, and they do have the same spec sheet that he has.
Okay. Have they been submitted and received?
I have two bids that have been submitted. And I'm waiting on the third.
Yeah, and I only have, what, I was told about it Friday, and the bid needs to be in on the 20th. I thought I had at least 30 days to bid on it. I didn't see it in the paper or anything, so it's the last minute thing. And you know, I went through it last time, and it wasn't, I don't think I was treated fair, but I just want a fair shot at it this time, that's all. I just want everything to be fair, everybody be in the same way.
Right.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If we could, I think he's put us on notice about the bid. I'm sure Mr. Toto would go over with it if anything, if we have any questions that he may have about material, whatever. I just ask that, you know, you know, protocol, you know, meet with him. And if you don't, it's not fair for us to see you talk about what the bid sheet is. None of us have even seen the bid sheet. And I think that that will go directly towards him first, give him my opportunity to clear up any reservations that you don't have about what needs to be done in the bid compliance of the bid.
We'll coordinate with Jimmy Toto on that. See where it goes. All right, thank you, appreciate you coming up to talk to us. All right, let's see, next is Archie A. Creed for public comment. Archie, let me remind you, we do have a three-minute limit for all speakers. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just got like two things I want to bring to the attention of the mayor and council. I think, this is my opinion, and my opinion only, and I want y'all to take it in consideration, like these agenda, these agenda things, and the way y'all starting to put together these, what goes on the agenda, how it gets out, you know, the public need to be informed about this stuff earlier and not be able to have to come and comment after the agenda has already been made and all this. The public really need to know what's going on the agenda in case they have some say-so. Because once y'all get started in y'all stuff, the public don't have no, not be able having to say-so or not. Or maybe look at, instead of having a public forum beginning of the City Council meeting, you might have it towards the end of the City Council meeting because people, people do legitimate things to say.
True.
And they need to, you know, we, the people, we the city, and we need to be considered as the city and the people and not just looked over. Nobody needs to be looked over. Everybody is a part of the city, everybody has a voice. And we, everybody that's a part of the city, they expect you to come here and pay your money, pay taxes, they want you to shop in the city and all that, they want you to spend your money in the city. But then, when it comes to other things, they don't want you to participate. And I just don't think, that's just my opinion. Everybody else is going to have a totally different opinion than mine because you got that right. But I just think that's something that we as a city and y'all as a council and a mayor should look over, just, I mean, just honestly, just look over.
Now, I know we posted the agenda several days in advance. Wanda, how far in advance we posted the agenda for the meeting?
It was probably on Friday morning or Friday afternoon.
Friday before the following Monday meeting. So it's, and it's posted on the door there at City Hall, as I recall, isn't it, the agenda? Anyway, but we do try to post it, that folks can see it.
I mean, everybody, you got older people that don't know what's going on, they can't drive up to no City Hall, and you got people that don't have cars. I mean, everybody ain't as fortunate as everybody else. I mean, I got a car, I want to drive.
How would you have the city post it?
Post it online or whatever, put it out there. If y'all create a Facebook page or create something.
Yeah, we may do that already, but if we don't, we can totally do that. I would guess, we're happy to do that. Wanda, let's make note to post them online in the future.
Are posting on our Facebook page or?
Yeah, on City Facebook page.
Our city website.
And a website, yeah, let's do both of those. Okay, Archie, you got 10 seconds. What else? All right, thank you. Okay, that's the end of public comment. Next, I'd be the agenda of the mayor's topics. Mayor doesn't have a topic to speak on tonight. So next will be council action topics. Councilman Denver.
Good evening. As most of y'all are aware, I did not run again for council. I am stepping away from politics. The election that we had this year brought a real light to my eyes, where we had a lot of new candidates running. And what I present tonight to the city to pass, which has to go on to the state, it allows equal opportunity for all new candidates, like Delilah Welborn, Troy Anderson, John Wiley. And when you're facing incumbent, 75% of the time you lose. So that's a real task to try to overcome. That's a disadvantage for a new candidate. You know, it'll help level the playing field, so you're not always facing incumbent. I'm a big fan of term limits. The town of Lincoln and Columbia County both have term limits. Of course, the President of the United States has term limits. So to make real change, I think you got to have some rotated new people in office. And so that's why I present tonight to you a term limits to the city of Washington. And I'll jump down to where the term limits is actually stated. In Section 4, Mayor and Council term of vacancy elections and term limits. No person shall be eligible as a candidate for mayor of this general municipal election of 2025 or any election thereafter as such candidate has served as mayor for two consecutive four-year terms of office immediately preceding the election in question. No term of office served as councilman should be considered determining if a person has served more than two consecutive terms. No person shall be eligible as a candidate for the council member in the general municipal election of 2025 or any election thereafter as such candidate has served as councilman for two consecutive four-year terms of office immediately preceding the election in question. No term of office served as mayor shall be considered determining if a person has served more than two consecutive terms. Now, I will clarify, what that means is, you serve two consecutive terms, you cannot serve, you cannot be a candidate in the following election.
Let's clarify who you're talking to. Two consecutive terms as a councilman?
Councilman or mayor.
Or mayor, either one of them.
Both calls, one call is for each. Each, you, as says, you know, the wording is specific and important, you know, before your terms of office immediately preceding the election in question, which means after you're done with your four years of sitting out, you're able to run again. It's just, you cannot go for three consecutive terms. So that's my motion on the table.
Unless you change from council member to mayor.
Right. Yeah, you can run, you don't, it doesn't, it doesn't underqualify you to be, or disqualify you to be a mayor. If you run for council two years, you can turn around and run for mayor in the third. And I mean, not year terms, so.
Mayor? Before we go on, I just have a couple of questions. One is, why, why we didn't have like some dialogue? If we really want to talk about moving forward, having true democracy and working together, did you reach out to, well, Reverend Hill wasn't on council because he is running special election, but you never ran this by me or you never ran this by Councilman Coles to get any input on, you know, what could be put into the verbiage of it, what need to be changed ever? We represent the districts, a majority African-Americans in our community, and look at the city demographics, it's almost over 60% of African-Americans. So I think that they should have some type of say-so in what has happened. And the other part about it is, why would you put this on the ballot and let the people vote for you? Now, I'm a very, I really feel that whatever the people want, we should honor that. The people just went to the ballot box, they just voted on who they wanted to sit at this table. Every four years, any candidate that want to run for office, whether it's the mayor's seat or whether it's the city council seat, have an opportunity to do something. My brother lost in an election. But my thing is this right here, the citizens are the ones who votes and put us at the table. I think that if we really want to work together about moving the city, or to get consistency from everybody, and my thing is this right here, if the citizens want a term limits, how am I wrong with it? But I think that we can't leave the citizens either looking or having to say-so of how this governing body is going to govern. And then on that, one more thing, Mayor, I can finish with that, I promise you. We got council members on their way out of their seat, want to dictate how the governing body is going to go forward or going to govern. That's not right. It's not, it's not, it's not right, it is not fair.
Can I make one point?
Go ahead.
I appreciate your comments on it. I mean, obviously, you would be affected along with Councilman Coles, so you have plenty of reason to fight back. But what, I just want one question answered, though. What would be detrimental, or what would be, would make this a bad idea for the new candidate or for any citizens of Washington? Obviously, people thought Delilah Welborn was a good candidate, she got a lot of votes. Her problem with running and winning an election is she facing incumbent. Once again, 75% of the times, 75% of the time incumbent runs, they win. So it's a hell of a burden.
That's not, that's not the way elections are voted on. Elections are voted on based on people who have track record or serve, they have a report with the people. It's not about whether you're an incumbent or whether or not you're liberal or whatever it is. It's not about that. It's about who, and it, Delilah didn't really come close to winning, you really didn't say nothing that I looked at. She did not come close to winning. You could have put both of those votes together, it would have tabled enough. But my point is this right here, Delilah ran, John Wiley ran. I've known John Wiley all my life. He used to cut my hair when we was young. And it's people that sit around this table that meddle into elections when they shouldn't be doing it. They shouldn't be doing that. And that's why I feel like, it's not fair for a council member who is not even seeking reelection, having often put out that, ain't even going to stay here anymore, want to dictate how this governing body is going to govern when it comes to elections. I think that that should have been on the referendum for the citizens, that the citizens vote for it. And then, and then further ado, I think it should be tabled to the new governing body in seat. Let them bring it up.
I just, I really want to challenge you one more time and ask you, what about this term limits do you not like?
The people make the term limits. That's who, you keep saying, the people make that charge regardless. It ain't about who's in the race. Because I got 20 years in, because people understand that I fight for them at this table. That's why. You referenced Delilah Welborn, she didn't knock on 10 doors. When you get, when you run for an election, you let the people know who you are and what you about. That's the point. You can't dictate that. The people, that majority dictates that. And that should have been put on a referendum and voted on, not you coming in and going out saying you want this to be a term limit. I'm not going to vote for it. It should be tabled. I'm asking it to be tabled.
I won't. I still haven't, nobody's given me, I mean, we're sitting around here trying to have a logical debate, and nobody that's opposing this has given me one reason why this is a bad idea.
I just, you just gave me one. You didn't give us one that was a good idea.
What makes this detrimental to the city government?
Because the citizens, the citizens don't have an opportunity to vote whether or not they want to do it or not.
Right. You're an elected official, what do you have?
Matthew, Mr. Denver, I feel that the citizens of Washington, especially the 60% of African-Americans that serve in this city, they should have an opportunity to play their role and vote whether or not they want to do it or not.
We don't do that on any other.
Let me ask our city attorney on that point. Is this something that should be done by a referendum, decided by a referendum, or is this something that falls into the authority of the city, City Council?
So, Mr. Mayor and council, the only way a charter can be changed on an issue like this is by the local legislative delegation. The state senator, state representative has to pass what we call a local bill through the legislature, and has to be signed by the governor. You can change your charter on other type issues, but not issues dealing with elections and appointment and so forth of council members and the power of the council and mayor.
So I think what I hear you saying is that it's not something that we could put out to a referendum to the public without changing our charter.
You can't change the city charter by referendum. In Georgia, you can only change the city charter two ways, by what they call home rule, y'all doing it. But even that's limited to certain kinds of changes.
I'd like to get input from other members of the council.
Yeah, I'd like to put this to the test also.
Yes, sir.
It's because, we're a 62% majority here. At this table right now, we went to vote on it, it'll be 3-3 and the map breaks the tie. That's not the majority that's running this city. And that's not right. It's going to be another lawsuit because we couldn't get folks sitting at this table across this discount crap. And it's not right. Now, y'all, we don't need to keep talking about it because, number one, they're outgoing. They don't even need to be discussing anything because they're not, they're not going to be here. Let the people decide, and let the ones that sit at this table decide, not about going out. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to weigh in on this, Councilman Denver, that you mentioned Troy Anderson, who was a candidate against myself. And if you, everyone knows that Troy Anderson and Mason Mahoney are brothers. And not only that, Mary Latt, but a member of my church. So if you look at that, from that perspective, I think it's a bad idea to take the democracy or the power away from the people. It was the people that put me back in office and not this body. So, and that's not to say anything negative, please, please understand what I'm saying. I just think that's a bad idea. Even with Mr. Archer a few minutes ago, mentioned that the constituents need to know what's going to happen on Monday nights and so forth. And so I think to put this here out for folk tonight is a bad idea. I think it'd be bad government for us to do that, and I'm totally, totally against it.
Okay. Charlie, you want to speak to this?
I think it's always good to have governments on politics. You get too engrossed in what you're doing, you know, that, I can understand Councilman Mahoney. But if you look at the last election, there was a lot of finagling going on. And you say, no, there wasn't. Well, we had somebody that was ready, running for mayor, Mahoney, put up all sorts of signs. Then at the last minute, before it was approved or before he got, he withdrew, he decided to run. And there was other members that were, there was a lot going on at City Hall, a lot of talking, so that they wondered, how can we best back up what we want to do District One? District One was trying to, and I hate to say it, finagle so they could get more seats in the day. We talk about 60% versus 40%. Population may be 60% versus 40%. The voting is not, the voting is required in District One, 97 or 98% of have to be African-American. That's why we rezoned everything.
Well, let's be clear, when you said, you made an accusation, you said District One was trying to win? Finagle.
Finagle. There was a, you can't tell me that all the words, all the stuff I saw on Facebook, all this going on, there wasn't, there wasn't some inside people who's.
Well, listen, it wasn't even about, it wasn't even about District One because I was a District One, City, City Council member that believed this idea, but I'm about unifying my district. I'm about unifying the black community. And I did not want to run against another African-American candidate that came in and signed up on Friday to run. That's why it was true. And she ran. So I don't want to say, see, now you're running.
She ran until she withdrew.
What, what, she went, that's the game of hockey.
Before elected, you.
You got the presidential.
I call it a water.
Yeah, the, what?
All right, let's stay.
We're not out of waters.
We're dry, we're dry dressing. Okay. Simply put, if term limits are a good time thing. And if you look across the nation, there are more and more counties in Georgia and cities are going to require term limits.
You said require, where's the evidence? You don't want to name two counties, name somebody else in the state of Georgia that's term limited.
I didn't.
You're right, you did your research, so that's why you shouldn't be talking about what you want to do and leaving. So I want to table this until the, until next year.
I want to make one point, I don't think we're getting a whole, getting very far. I just want to make a couple more points so everybody understands this. In Facebook, YouTube world or wherever, 75% of incumbents win elections. If you don't see that as a disadvantage for new candidates, I don't know what you're looking at, number one. looking at, number one. Number two, some of these candidates that ran, like Delilah Webber and Troy Anderson, your own brother, John Wiley, how is this a disadvantage to them with term limits? How would it be a disadvantage to them?
You keep missing the picture.
No, but I mean, I can't get a question answered.
They have knocked on my door. Never rang my phone. Yeah, but it said, they never.
I didn't, I had nothing to do with their campaign. That's tall. Right. But I'm just saying, how is it, if you have a seventy-five percent chance of losing, I mean, there's some numbers.
Get out there and tell the county what you want to vote for.
The other thing is bad.
Let me, let me go to Councilman Anderson, please.
If I could change the focus a little bit, I want to ask a question for clarity for all of us, to our city attorney, how the process works that, that I understand. This is a lengthy process that goes through the state legislature to the governor to change the charter of a city. I did a little bit of research on this, and I tell you, Lincoln had changed in nineteen ninety-seven. And even there, they've had councilmen run for eight years, move to run for mayor, and win. Get out of mayor for eight years and go back and run for council. It doesn't prohibit you from doing that. But I know it has to go through a lengthy process, through state representatives, and our, our representative and our senator for this part of Georgia. And there's a time sequencing in there, that if it gets through the state legislature in this next session, and now I'll turn over to you, if you could explain that to us, Mayor, how the timing works.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, the local legislation, which this would require to change the charter, has to be passed by the General Assembly, the House, and the Senate, has to be signed into the law by the governor like any other bill, it has to get a majority vote in both houses and signed by the governor. The timing on that is, the General Assembly always goes into special session in January, forty days, which usually lasts through, into March, is generally when they're there. Uh, the governor is going to have us back in special session at the end of November. He said local legislation could be done there, but he said only, quote-unquote, "prudential." I don't think this would qualify. But normally it's in January. So although technically it has to pass the whole House and the whole Senate, traditionally the way it works, ninety-nine percent of the time, is that it's really up to the local representative and senator. And if the local representative and senator sign off on it, it gets put on what's called a local calendar, and is voted on with twenty or thirty other local bills once a week. And, and then all those have to go to the governor's signature. So that's, that's technically how the process works.
Mayor, the question of that, you said time limit.
Yes, sir.
This body vote three, three, and the mat breaks the tie, and the representative of District One is the majority in the city, they could be sued for this because, number one, you're not listening to the public that represent the majority in the city. But just, but that's exactly why when Ayesha Bunnet tried to put the city in the counter together at the last minute and said, let's come by. So we need to stop this nonsense and do the right thing. Y'all keep wanting to work together, work together, it's not working together. You got, uh, you take Al, uh, the two he just named about lost the election, you should get out there and help in campaigns. You campaigning when you want to win an election. So, so like I said, you can go down this road, but I guarantee you, I'm going to find somebody to sue the city for this, because the majority of folks, if we, the District One said we don't want this, and District Two said they do, that's not the majority. So let's go forward, let's, let's make it happen.
I want to make one final comment. If the city of Washington wants true change, the only way you can do that is having new elected officials.
You don't know that.
Can I finish?
You don't know that.
New ideas, new perspectives, and, and, and being able to come at the table with a different position than the same crowd all the time. It, it gives an opportunity for, it's not mean you can't run again, you can run again, but you have to sit out.
No, they don't have to sit out.
And so I just think, once again, if the city of Washington wants real change, you got to have new people.
No, it's just like you said, if you want somebody that, uh, y'all control, if somebody is going to run for election, they need to get out there and let people know what they're going to do. That's not too charged.
Yeah, well, I mean, I.
I, I'm going to table this.
Go ahead.
See what we're doing? We're going right back to the same way we're going to go back in twenty twenty-four, where we got a new mayor that's going to be seated, new council members that are going to be seated, and we already set the tone of the government before we can get there. You hear one district saying that they're not, they don't want to do it, you want to do it. Citizens were left out of the loop of voting on it at this referendum. I think that if we can't unanimously come up with a way that we can do it, we need to put off into a referendum that the citizens vote for.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like a clarification for the lawyer about voting in referendums and, and putting things on balance for municipal elections. Have we had issues on municipal elections like city council and mayor? We don't have another one until two years from now, correct?
Not another city election until November of twenty twenty-five, yes.
That's right. So it's two years from now before we get to have another referendum in part, that's what, I think that's what you're saying. And if it's to go through the legislature, the timing is upon us, and I think you had said that it was even, we're, we're kind of at, we don't have a lot of, of extra time to get to pursue this, correct? For the, for, to hit twenty twenty-five, two years.
So if, if anything y'all want to change the charter, and whether it be this or that, I would tell you not to wait until the legislature starts, because they're all up there, and, and they, they've dealt with fifty things. And if, if, if you ever want to change the charter, you need to do it in the previous year, make, send them a request.
It seems like y'all already discussed it. That's what it seemed like to me, because, number one, time is not the point, the point is the citizen. They deserve the respect and not being taken, because, like I said, District One is not voting for them. So if you can't sit at the table and discuss it like it should be, the next council coming in, y'all can go for it. And if, and if it goes forward, and this body choose to go forward with it, you know, I, I'm pretty sure that we're going to be asking state representatives to come down for a town hall about him not supporting on the legislature. We also want to go to the cabinet meeting with our senator about our objection to it, the sixty percent of the population of the city is against it, and also be writing a letter to the governor about him vetoing. So I just don't, I, I think to do it the right way is to let the citizens go to the polls, just like they just did, and let them vote them.
I don't, it's not the process, so they, they can't vote on and make that change. And I'll also make one more point, I mean, as we've been doing this a while, it's almost a conflict of interest for any incumbent to sit up here and argue the point that there's a, of term limits. I mean, you're, it's, it's directly affecting you, so it's more of a self-service.
Listen, I'm not so, I'm not, I'm not so in love with this, I'm in love with the people that have served. And, and, and I want to, and that's why I got this on for the youth leadership program, because we need to start the women that's going to take these seats. I want to sit up here and keep, and do what we want to do now, I want to leave this city in a better position than it was when I found it. And I think that we should create that climate of working together, so when we do bring these kids, and they don't have to listen to what we already got going on, that's not right, that's not fair.
My last comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Since my name was used in, in reference to, um, Troy Anderson and Delilah, in four years, I have never missed a city council meeting. Never missed a city council meeting, even when COVID. Going back to Councilman Cullor, if people want to win, you got to knock on doors. People want your representation because you're committed. I have not seen these individuals here in city council meetings. And we're standing up and, and making a law, want to put a law in place, and then they never have pretty much attended city council meetings. So I take it very offensive, uh, for the people that I do represent that had put me in office, and I think this need to be put on hold or rejected completely into the new year, uh, to our mayor-elect and the new council are able to sit at the table and communicate with each other. But I take it very offensive that, uh, my name is put in the same category with folks who do not attend city council meetings.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Just one more comment. I think we've kind of gotten off the perspective of, of what this means for the city, and it shouldn't be judged on this last election. I know that got into a discussion and making pertinent points, but it's not about this last election, it's about the, the future. And it's going in until two years from now, and what it does, I thank you, I agree with Matt, it opens more opportunity and an incentive for more people in Washington, both District One and District Two throughout, to get involved with, with, with our city government. And I, I think it's, it's, it's better, no matter what, what the environment is, it's going to bring more people in on a repetitive basis, eight years is still a long time. And in my perspective, I think, I agree with, with Councilman Wagner, term limits are a good thing for throughout the country, starting with our president. And I agree, more and more cities, I don't know the numbers, and counties in Georgia have gone towards term limits and are moving more that way. And I defer to Barry, he might know, because he, he sits in all the legislatures. But it's not, to me, it's not about this last election.
Once again, it's about the last election, once again, we keep talking about what District Two and District One is deciding which one is split. I make a motion, we table this until COVID. That's my motion.
I second the table.
We got, we got a motion pending, we're going to call that first.
Call it.
Sorry. Any further discussion? I'd like to call the vote.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I think after I got done speaking, I don't know, did anybody second my motion?
So it's down?
No, we haven't had a chance.
I'll second it. Just now seconded, it's down.
Councilman has a second, all right. Motion's made a second, we've discussed it, all right. Uh, let me call the vote. All in favor of the motion? Now, let me, let me be clear, the motion is to adopt term limits that set forth in your resolution with the minutes, with the, with the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I see three in favor, all opposed. I'm going to break the tie in favor of the motion, motion passes. All right, let's go on to the next thing.
Excuse myself.
Councilman Mahoney, you got a motion on the youth leadership program?
It's a discussion topic.
Discussion topic, right.
I would table that to the, um, new mayor council to see it in a year. I do want to speak, um, to Barry Smith. Uh, to Barry Smith with, um, Peace Day, he had, he helped, had reached that book club. And, you know, it was something to learn from our young people who may have had disagreement with other young, um, youth, but they really set the tone of our community, were coming together with, having a peace day to really bring unity back into our community. So I wanted to commend, I know some of you may have not known that the Peace Day happened and the date happened, a lot of people attended, a lot of people gave, um, donated, it was free to the public. I just want to commend Barry Smith, and while I was working with him for bringing Peace Day to the city of Washington, I think it's something that we all could have learned from them, being younger than us, on how we should, um, have peace among each other. And I just want to commend him for the work that he did.
Now, is, is there an event or something?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, okay. All right. All right, I think that covers the agenda. Any further topics?
Well, we have to see if we want to go into executive.
And I was going to say, do we have anyone who want to go to, need to go to executive session? All right, hearing none, uh, do I have a motion, we adjourn?
Just make the motion if we adjourn.
All right. Seconds?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
I adjourn.
Thank you, folks.
And this the kind of, um, council and stuff, y'all want to run? When y'all doing stuff like this, underhand, you know, make no sense, y'all want to run for somebody, y'all run for somebody. But then, but y'all got to here, y'all have a city, I mean, a city attorney that's doing all this stuff behind everybody's back. But one thing I'm going to tell y'all, the tide's going to turn. One day, somebody else is going to run this city, and you're going to be looking stupid. And you can mark my word on that. Same stuff that make you laugh, remember this, people, in this world, the same stuff that make you laugh, it's going to be the same thing that make you cry. I'll, I'll, if you get published on me, hombre, because I'm going to speak when I need to speak. When it's injustice, it's injustice. When it's injustice, it's just, get him! Get him! When you doing wrong, you doing wrong, when you doing the people wrong, we citizens, we Maltese. And it's wrong, I'm just saying, it's wrong. And you can come and do whatever you want to do, brother. Because like I said, you know me, you know me. You know me, you know me, you know me.
I give a better.
You have a friend that's a public figure. I ain't saying nothing wrong. What they, what they, what they did wrong, what they say wrong, you, the man that's going to him out. That's the problem. Y'all think white is right. This is a town, it's a market. Now, I have support for that. Y'all want to sit up here and get behind our banner and do all this stuff, we need to leave you around here.
[inaudible]
You can't win the race, you can't win the race. You buy people, they can't win, so this is stuff you know.